Let's go on Facebook. How many ounces did you drink?
Four gallons.
How many do you drink today? How many are you supposed to drink today?
Just one. I don't. Sometimes I don't get all the.
It's so much water.
Tom, aren't you supposed to be up there?
Maybe. On vacation or what?
It did say recording in progress. We have about nine minutes and then we'll start the meeting because we did advertise it to start at five P M. Yeah, if you scan the Q R code with your phone with your camera, they'll take you to the link to participate in the meeting. And the what? Um, there's some pieces on it in the slides. Yeah. No, it's the presentation.
It's all right. Yeah. I sent it and I realized the first thing it says introduce puppies. There's puppies on the video. They were all picked up today, so now we have no ones. Which is good. A rescue picked them up. So I was excited by that. Uh, two separate litters, one of seven, one of six. Two of six and then after they left another puppy, the litter was found.
Sarah, do you have any, tell everybody how long it had.
Please.
Okay, so there's a Q R code on the screen that you can swing your camera up and then it'll pull up a website and just touch that website, you don't actually take a picture of it. Or you can go to your web browser and type in the aha slide dot com slash U J L G S. And that will answer questions on your phone throughout the presentation. Questions, anybody need help?
Already started?
Oh, sorry, I found a fancy pen and a closet things might have happened.
Take somebody my age, long time no. I am always. Getting drained. Yeah, well, we did three days, so we're getting there.
Um, would one of you guys like to start it out? Mr. Davidson's gonna give a small intro, but would you guys like to start the meeting?
Started.
To say welcome and.
Sure.
Here we go.
However, you want.
They're not ready for me. Halfway through and every page is like.
I like them.
Looking for emergency. But yeah, I got replied to and I didn't send anything.
Yes.
How are you doing? Wake up, we got a fun theme music coming up.
Does anybody need help getting more into the presentation on the.
Make sure you got some help.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Welcome everybody here. To the. Down hall meeting on our water. Glad everyone's here that's here. We'll probably have some more people come in later. If anybody does and they have questions. You know, can we randomly go back and put up that slide to let them all again and it'll stay up.
The QR code will stay up, yeah.
Okay. Well, Eldon's already stealing my lines. I was gonna welcome everybody here. And online. My name is Mike Davidson. I asked Ms. Austin if I could kick this meeting off with a few comments and perspective from a citizen. Y'all, excuse me one second.
Quickly realize I didn't have my reading glasses on. Sorry about that.
I'm not a city employee. I'm an everyday resident, just like most others here. Concerned about our water situation. Some days concerned, uh, some days frustrated. Uh, some days outright upset that we find ourselves in this position. But here's the deal. Hindsight is twenty twenty. And what is most important is what we do from this point forward. And whatever we do, uh, we need to do it with a sense of urgency. This meeting represents our city government wanting to be transparent and keeping us informed. Talking to us to get our ideas and input. Folks, water is a very emotional issue. I've discovered that. And for this reason, I think it critical that we all maintain respect for each other and just have a conversation. Ask some questions, look for answers. Everyone here is a part of this community and I guarantee everyone wants a solution. Let's all be part of the solution. Many years ago, the city drafted a drought contingency plan, D C P for short. A D C P is literally a plan B. When water demands start failing to be met. Usually because of an extended drought, it could be because of equipment failure. Or a catastrophic event like a tornado or flood, lightning, um, taking out part of our water system. But basically it's when supply does not meet public demand. Plan A is to never need a drought contingency plan. Our plan was drafted many, many years ago. It was a requirement to have one and it was put together quickly with the probability that frankly, we would never need it. When ultimately we did need it, it was very much outdated. Our current plan uses a tank level indicator to monitor the health of our water system. This is a bit like a check engine light on your car. Uh, you know, something is wrong, but you don't know exactly what. In our system, if that tank indicator starts declining, you know, you've got problems. And somewhere maybe a big leak, pump failures. This, uh, simple system worked okay, still does. And has served its purpose, but we were in a different time then than we are now. Tonight, the city will be addressing a bit more modernized plan. They're calling a water efficiency plan or W E P. That is more aligned with the situation we are now. And they will be discussing other water topics as well. So feel free to participate. And with that, let's kick this thing off.
The first question is where do you live? If you guys can state if you live in the city or. Slide please. What service provider do you have for your water? City Portalis, Co-op Water, Wellwater or other? And just so everybody knows, we're asking these questions so we can take in some data as well.
And anybody that's come in late, that Q R code to the left of the screen. Just put your phone on camera. Put your phone up there and zero in on that and then it'll open up a link for you to to join in. Just log in and go in.
Next slide please. The city of Portalis has experienced droughts throughout its history. The Ogallala Aquifer is rapidly declining and has been since the nineteen sixties. The saturated thickness in this well dropped from a hundred and forty feet in nineteen seventy to twenty eight feet to today. As a result, the yield dropped from over six hundred gallons per minute to fifty four gallons per minute. Today, and that is one of the city's best producing wells. And as you can see in the figure, some of the percentages that the city has experienced moderate to exceptional drought nearly every year since the nineteen sixties. Their drought conditions continue to impact the city and are of great concern to every city's of Portalis citizen. Next slide please.
Oh, before you go on to that, one of the questions I had on that one is which well were we talking about? You kind of jumped to a well and I know we have thirty seven wells.
We have, we have forty seven wells and we have some resting and some that are being worked on.
Let me know which well we're speaking up here that.
This would be Blackwater Well Four. The Ogallala Aquifer is rapidly declining. The large underground reservoir stretches from Wyoming and the Dakotas to New Mexico. With segments of crossing key farmland in Texas, Nebraska, Kansas and Oklahoma. It serves as the main water source for what is known as the breadbasket of America. An area that contributes at least a fifth of the total annual agricultural harvest in the United States. The U S G Geological Survey began warning about the aquifer's depletion in the nineteen sixties. Though the severity of the issue seems to have only recently hit the mainstream, farmers in places like Kansas are now grappling with the reality of dried up wells. This correlates with the last, uh, slide and there's some pictures on here that you can see where the first one shows. Animal, the annual precipitation. The middle one is historical cover for cities, farmland growth, prairies, things like that. This is all that's taken into consideration. With climate control and then you have the last slide, which is really important that shows where New Mexico is. The estimated aquifer exhaustion date shows between two thousand and twenty three hundred and we're in between the two thousand and twenty one hundred mark. The Ogallala Aquifer, like I stated before, is underlies parts of Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska, New Mexico, Oklahoma, South Dakota, Texas and Wyoming. From wheat and cows to corn and cotton, the regional economy depends on almost exclusively on agriculture irrigated by the Ogallala groundwater. But according to the fourth national climate assessment, producers are extracting water faster than is being replenished, which is what's happening in the city now. Which means that parts of the Ogallala Aquifer should be considered a non-renewable source, current extraction for irrigation far exceeds recharging this aquifer. And climate change places additional pressure on this critical water source. The darker the color, the greater the change. This first picture is a slide I got from the Ogallala Aquifer Symposium, so to say. It talks about this is a situation to manage, not a problem to solve. We can manage this situation if we work together as a community and that's our entire goal here is, um, we have new council members on and our re-uh, occurring council members know that water is a priority. That's something that we're actively working on every single day. I'm getting questions all the time by the community, by the council members, by staff. We genuinely are trying to work on this situation. So some of the solutions that we have are a little time consuming for what you have, but we are actively working on this, on this problem. The picture on the right is you can see is the water level change. This is from two thousand and nineteen. And New Mexico, where we're located is in the dark orange and the lighter orange. And we thought it would be important to show you kind of where we're at. Do you guys have any questions about these previous slides? Please ask them in this and we will try to answer them as best as we can. And anybody in the audience, you guys are welcome to ask me now while we wait for everybody else to type in there if you guys would prefer. Can we go back to the third slide? It'll stop people. Yeah, so. That's something that I will have to look up. I got that information off of, um, N O A A, but I can get that information to you and repost it. We will also repost all of these slides on our Facebook and our social medias after this meeting. So if other questions pop up after that, we'll get it back to you. But I can definitely get an answer and then after the meeting, if I can get your contact info, I will get that information back to you.
And I know one of the ones, the, the one right after that, that has, you know, where is it depleting the fastest? That's one of the ones I sent her earlier when we were reviewing this. We are in the second highest areas as far, you know, the very, very dark red that you saw was the ones that are depleting the fastest. We're right on the edge of that and the dark orange that is the very next depletion rate. So as far, it's not just. It's not, I mean, there's more to it than the first picture. When we first got it was just where is the Ogallala? It looks awesome and great and wonderful, big blue picture. But we're on the very edge of that lake, so to speak. And, uh, we're, we're in the part that's depleting the fastest by far. I, I didn't find, I looked for ones with a date on it, Greg, and I didn't find one. Um, that, that I could pinpoint where Portalis was. I don't know if Eldon had any better luck than I did, but it's kind of hard to overlay New Mexico laps on top of those Ogallala maps and pinpoint exactly where Portalis is. Uh, but I know it's soon. It's not, not that far.
I've been involved with water for decades. And if this is the real information, we know that the Ogallala has been the premier for years, for, you know, sixty, seventy years. And a lot of plans have been made over the, over the time, uh, to help us with these situations. As far as saturated pigments, you know, what's left in the aquifer area. Uh, it's no different than you know, if you travel to the north, they're focused, you know, they talk that, you know, that there's more up there because they're not having the problems we're having, but we're all in the same boat. We're all in the same situation. We're considering, uh, to saturate pigments. In fact, our water is a shallow, it is, you know, if you travel more. But, uh, years ago, uh, in the late nineties, I was a city council member. In the, in fact, I mean, there's a city council, we, uh, we were able to, uh, secure six thousand acres of land and water runs out of Blackwater well field to buy us years of, of water supply. Uh, that added to what we already have. And, uh, and with that, we also were able to, uh, to lease another six thousand acres of land and water lots in the state of Mexico. So we had about twelve thousand acres of land and water lots up there to work with and, and to plan for the future. So we wouldn't be in this situation here. And, and what, what the plan was, was that we knew that this sixteen wells that were there when I came involved with the city, uh, were enough. When I left the mayorship, we had, we had gone from sixteen wells to thirty three wells, I believe. So we really worked hard and tried to improve our situation so we would get machine. But it shouldn't have stopped there. We really needed to continue to, to develop more of that twelve thousand acres of land and water lots. And that meant really more wells because the wells that are there now are producing much less. Of what we used to produce in the past, maybe, uh, I would say five, six hundred gallons per minute. We're producing maybe, you know, fifty to sixty gallons per minute. So it's quite a drastic change in, in that timeframe. So, but we've always known and the city of Portalis has always known that we have to continue to develop year after year. And if we don't develop year after year, it'll run into trouble. Which we're in trouble with, uh, and, and to make any reason to. Uh, back then, we hired an hydrologist, an expert hydrologist to help us to understand where we were and what we had. Uh, his name is Charlie Wilson and he still works for the city and still prepares, um, a, uh, annual, um, water use report to the city. And I was like, encourage all of you to hear, uh, because he has a stigma on the pulse of what's out there out well field. And he's, he's recommending to the city every year what needs to be done. And, uh, I think if we follow that plan, then I think it was, hey, um, a lot of circumstances can happen. I'm not here pointing fingers at anyone. But I can say that we can't stop developing out there and, uh, you know, because we're gonna, we're gonna get in deeper trouble if we do. Um, you know, it's, it's a matter of us saying ahead of the, of the problem. And, and ahead of the problem, eventually if we keep, you know, mining this aquifer, which has been mined for a hundred and twenty years. When they started building some of the first wells here in like nineteen oh four, nineteen oh five, when there were just pictures of wells producing eighteen hundred gallons a minute. And it's incredible, but they've done that for decades, decades, a hundred years, a hundred and twenty years. And as you can see, that aquifer is, is down, down to the bottom. We're probably on the best saturated thickness and I haven't, I, I can't recall the, the latest report on Reddit, but I can, I can remember numbers, but we're probably our best wells. For may have. Twenty to thirty feet of saturated thickness. And saturated thickness means. The bottom of the aquifer, which we call the red bed. Uh, the saturated thickness is how much water well we have from that bottom. Saturated thickness means that that water is in there mixed with sand and gravel and clay and anything else. If you didn't, if you didn't envision this aquifer, kind of like, um, like a big, also. Because of big soda ice and water, you stick your straw through the soda. That soda was kind of how we pull water out of wells. In some cases, it's easier to pull out. In some cases, it's, it's more dense and it's harder to pull. But, you know, the bottom line is we're down to twenty or thirty feet. In some cases, we're negative. You know, there's hills and valleys in that, that bottom that aquifer. If you drill a well at the top of a, of a hill, that red bed, you're gonna run out of water. If you was to find the low parts of that river, that's going to have much more productivity out of that wells. Um, you all probably have heard of the Duke Pipeline Project. And I'm part of that Duke Pipeline Project. I'm the administrative authority. And we're working very hard and as quickly as we can to start that pipeline. People really need to, at least there are most of the members of those communities. Because we knew that river then at some point we need that. When the state of New Mexico back in the, in the fifties, uh, realized that probably the late forties. Because in the fifties, the state of New Mexico signed the, uh, or put together the Canadian River Compact between. New Mexico, Texas and Oklahoma, to hold back water from the lower Canadian run. And that is what allowed the state to build new dams. The whole purpose of that, of that reservoir, of that dam was to hold back. Uh, the allotment of that Canadian River Compact gave, which was up to two hundred thousand feet a year. Uh, to provide water to the residents of New Mexico. That's all the purpose of it. And over those years, uh, I'll be, I'm almost in. Just want to get a little back on. Over the years, uh, over the decades, you know, the urgency was there, so the pipeline wasn't built. Uh, but the urgency is there now and the construction is up perfect. Uh, it's all happening now out in the country. So you guys don't see much activity, but it is in fact happening. And we're hoping that it's completed by the end of the making. So when you read Charles Wilson's report and he says, we gotta make it through the gap. What he means is between now and when that pipeline was built. And that's the goal of where. You know, I encourage the city to, to stick to the plan. And to really stay focused on that plan. Keep us out of trouble. There's enough water and enough, enough, uh. Acres out there, the city controls enough water land. And if we drill, not develop it, which is going to cost money. If you stay on top of it, stay ahead of it, it's not going to run through us, so we'll be okay. And we can deal with it for that, whether it's on, studying the surface waters or studying to us. And then we can manage both. So we can rest the aquifer a minute, recharge a little bit. While we're using surface water during years of droughts, then we can use a little more of, of the groundwater to, to. Uh, to complement the surface water when it's not all available. So that's kind of the, the goal and that was the goal when I was in the leadership of the city of Peralos. I think that plan is still a solid plan. I really believe that. But I think we need to stay focused on that plan because if we don't. Uh, then we lose sight of it and we didn't talk behind it. And I think that may be what happened. You can't blame our city manager because she's new here. She inherited all of this and she probably didn't know the details of all of this. Uh, but, you know, I really encourage our, our leadership, the, my. Our administration to our council that. Stay focused on this and we really, uh, work hard at getting ahead of it so we don't run into trouble. Anytime we get into a, uh, emergency. Water restrictions, it's, it's not good for the community. It's not healthy. It hurts us and everyone. Not just personally, but it hurts us with everything that we've invested in our communities. We, we certainly need to be in that situation. I really encourage us to, to work hard at. Not only make the plans for drought management. But also develop a plan immediately. To get us out of this situation. So we're not in it next summer, or next spring, because it's going to be in here pretty quick. And we need to, we need to be out of it and get ahead of this. Anyways, just wanted to say then, thank you for the.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's online, so you won't hear it in this room.
You won't hear it, but we hear you.
Okay, um. My name's Alan Carter. Been a farmer here for forty-five years, irrigated farmer. With all due respect, former mayor. You don't have your facts. I've drilled over forty wells. Probably more than that. Uh, when you talk about the Ogallala. We continue, and, and this is why I'm here today. I, I wanna try to help educate. The city council, the, the, the water committee. And actually bureaucrats, no pun intended. But we, we have bureaucrats. That when they can't solve the problem, they go and talk to other bureaucrats in other parts of the. Of the county or the state and they're not coming out on top to the actual people who use the water. Um. When you talk about the beautiful blue Ogallala. That was gone in nineteen eighty-five. Um, we started looting water in nineteen eighty-five, therefore we had to go out and start searching here. In Roosevelt County. For what we call stream water. So when somebody tells you that, oh, well, they're, we're down to twenty-eight saturated, that absolutely means nothing. Why? Because when you stick a pump in it, in the first twenty-four to thirty-six hours, you pumped it out. We have no top water left. From the eighties and nineties. So you have to find stream water. That stream water comes in. From, from the northwest. And it travels to the northeast. Um. So, south, that's, excuse me, south. And by the way, uh. Some people don't like the word witching or dousing. So I did a little bit of homework and I asked. Some of our people that, uh. Have been working in the well field. How do you go about? Finding your water? Well. Well, we know. Well, how do you, what determines where you drill? Well, we just drill a test hole. You have no new technology. We have no mapping. I mean, because I know a lot of people don't really understand or believe in dousing or witching. I don't like that terminology either. But it works. And where's the new technology? It's out there. But yet we want to spend taxpayers' money to go. Drill a test well that may have water in it, may not have water. So when you talk about red bed. Let's say this is red. Back in the fifties and sixties, when they drilled, we had so much water. I agree with you there. A lot of water. But now that it, and when they drilled, they drilled the red bed and they stopped. And they raised it up. Three to four feet so that it wouldn't. Uh. Uh, tear the motor up, tear the bolts up. At that time, they were turbines. Now they're subs because you're right, we're fifty-four gallons a minute is. Basically horrible. There's no water. But what I'm trying to say is when those wells were drilled. And they hit red bed, they raised that, what they raised those pumps up. So what does that mean? Water runs on top of the red bed. Mayor, mayor, uh, former mayor, my favorite is right, water runs on the red bed. Think of a bathtub. If you drill in the bathtub and you hit your bottom of the bathtub and then you raise it up. Three to four feet. You've got three to four feet of water still in that stream, however wide that stream is. I just, I switched. Two weeks ago. A house well on loan. It hit seventy-five gallons a minute, maybe better than that. They just stuck a pipe in it. The water's out there. But the problem. The problem is when you go brush a well. Are we spending money? On that well? That it's not even in the stream, but we're brushing it, we're cleaning it up. Where, where's the technology to even know that those wells are still in the stream? Because we're not in the law. We haven't been since eighty-five. Now, we might have been. When the Ogallala was, but it has receded so far back. That we get our water. From stream water. And if you don't hit those streams. You don't have any water. So what I'm trying to convey to y'all is. You got twelve thousand acres of land out there. You go out there and you, what, throw a rock? Any money, mom? We're gonna just drill a hole? I mean, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna, are, are we, are we going to? Pass the technology? Or we're going to witch? Or we're going to find those streams? Then if you don't drill properly. And drill down into red bed ten foot. Then raise the pump up. But you're still down under red bed. Then you get all the water in the stream. You don't have to worry about going back in deep enough. But. I, I mean, we have water and I'm not picking on the U Lake project. That's coming. But the thing about it is. You're right, we've got to have water now. We're still in stage three and we've got water in that well field. But we gotta have people that understand how it works and how to drill the wells. And how deep to drill the well. And one more thing, you know, I'm gonna quit. Gravel pack. When you drill a well and you gravel pack, when we drilled and we had those eight or gallon wells. We had to take a caterpillar. To push the sand away because we had so much sand coming in. Well, we don't have that top water now. So we don't have that pressure. And when we do find water. I think it would be more valuable to get it up out of the ground before you shut it off with pea gravel. You put pea gravel back in it, you hit a hundred gallon well and you shut it off fifty percent, now you're about fifty gallons. And. I think we need to relook at the, the way we're drilling. So, so that. You know, so that, so that we can cleanse the water after we get it out of the hole. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could go on.
Thank you.
I'm an Alan, and Alan pretty well covered the thing. Alan covered everything pretty well, but I was just running out. What, what did Brian on the very end of the ground? And why can you do it clearly on the ground? The city probably asked to drill the wells and do certain. Aspects of it to state standards and so they're having to use pea gravel to handle sand. Long way to do it. I don't care what state well you want. Sand should be handled after the water is dug up and ground. And then the sand should be handled through sand traps or other things like that. That's when you do the sand away. I guarantee you, if your best well is fifteen, three gallons. All the way up there down the river. The sand that meets has shut it off. Alan mentioned where it reached. The, the deal with reaching, what I will propose for the city to do. Is number one, hit a hydrologist. Then willing and telling what you don't want to do. And still, hydrologist is telling you that. I said in meetings whenever Blackrock draw. I know what hydrologists spoke. He told you straight out of the gate. Things that don't never want to happen. He's also telling me now, because I was reading for the poll. About five months ago, four months ago. And I came in and said in a meeting with state office to listen to him at that time. He bluntly told the council that once you get a project. It's done, you just follow your. Guides. You look at it that way, you got the. When I first came into this meeting, the first thing to talk about, and I only knew the acronym was. Perfect plan. There was a mission to do, to do this. And it was, the plan was going, so you never had to do it. Whoever set that plan up. It was in out of their mind. The reason we do planes, we expect to do. And so if you don't do a plan. On this water situation. Expecting to have to use it. You'll not develop a plan in the world. So as we do this, remember. You, you play. Since they did this. And I don't have statistical. Numbers to back me up. But since they decided to leave the U Lake project, because I'm not saying that's a bad idea. But it's must fix. That project, I would venture to say in the last twenty years. Would have only supplied water to Peralos, Missouri. They were rich, they were trying to do that. And I'm not sure it was supplying more than a year. But it's not going to be a project that fixes this. It's going to be a project that helps this. It helps you find wells at work. It helps you re-drill wells with the boots. I also have a suggestion. I don't know the word for it, but the new oil comes with a huge size of record. What should happen. Is you should hire hydrologists. That can do that. They should map that hole. I didn't realize it's twelve thousand acres. I'm glad to hear that. If they follow you, it's. That whole twelve thousand acres. Then we need to go out and find you. A handful of guys. That can reach. If you like the word. You don't tell them. Do not communicate. Be calm and true. Let them go out and tell you where to drop a drill. Overlay the maps. And I guarantee you, you will find more if you let us out of there. You can't go out there and drill a well that's close to our line. You can't go out there and drive, drive, drill a well that's close to the, the road that's already. You have to drill a well where the strings work. And this is not just valves. Anytime you go to Red Oce, just look at the young. Look at the, look at the springs that are driven in. And imagine that that's just still in flat. Like our feet. That's what we have down the road. You don't have the outlets. We have springs and we gotta find. The Okaloa has always been. A, a system that recharges. Well, well, we charge. It's back. Doesn't recharge at speed we use. So if it's recharging. Does it recharge in front? Charging on the streams. Actual witching and if the light work, the water is silent recording. You'll come in and turn it in and you'll find water.
Think in the oil field, they call those doodle buggers.
I didn't know what they called it in water.
Basically a big truck that's got a, a thumper on the bottom of it and they go across the land and they. Set that thumper down and it puts out a vibration and they measure the seismic activity off of it. And then they can. Actually draw a map of where there is cavities, uh, where there's water, where there's oil. Yeah, and it was showing outline of it. So. I've been doing that in the oil field for years, trying to find oil. They quit doing it so much now that they started fracking and pulling it up out of horizontal wells, but. That is the term.
I had friends that worked on thumpers for years in our county.
We're gonna try to answer some of the questions online. Chris, will you scroll up for me, please? There's a top, okay, so why don't we hire a third party hydrologist? Why do we not have modern technology? We do have hydrologists that we work with. We work with the state engineer's office. Um, contrary to what we were just told, our hands are tied on what the state engineer allows us to do. Um, every well that we drill, everything we do has to be done by an engineer, has to bring in a hydrologist. We have to worry about. The prairie chickens and the sand dune, uh, lizards and the owls, the spotted owl. We have to worry about the prairie chickens and the sand dune, uh, lizards and the owls, the spotted owls. So our hands are tied on what we can do. It's not like a private well person where you can just grow, go out and drill a twenty, twenty thou, or a twenty-foot well or whatever you are saying. We don't have that luxury. We have to go through so many red tapes to drill one single well, and it takes a long time to get through that tape. So I just want everybody to know that kind of process. Do you want to add anything to that?
I just, I just feel like, um, having to do all that with the state, everything that goes through, um, having to drill that well to get all the permits, everything, there's geologists or they do an archaeo, uh,
It's archaeological.
Archaeological survey, a geol, uh, geophysical survey. All that stuff being said, that to get to one well is, is very difficult.
That's why it's important to stay ahead of me.
Yes.
Because we have to go through all of those hoops. The reason why municipalities or anyone that provides water to the public, uh, they have to do that for the public's safety. And anytime you're dealing with grant fund, we also have to go through hoops and buy partners types of years.
Yes.
You know, we have to realize that we're going to be doing that, but we have to, we have to, you know, we have to get way ahead of this so we can go through all of those permitting processes, all of that design and everything else. Speaking of, you know, locating the, the right places, I think, I think there could be some flexibility there if, um, if it was allowed to be tried, and I think that that might could happen. Um, you know, it could hurt to try one, you know, and see if it works. But, you know, back in the day, which technology hasn't improved so much, um, we don't drill wells with directed idling, but we, we mapped the aquifer through existing wells. You know, the logs of the, that's how we knew sort of the, the peaks were in the valley. Um, but, you know, we follow channels and, and streams. And, uh, you know, there are good areas and there are areas that shouldn't be drilling. You know, that's, that's another, that's another direction that they couldn't be looked at.
Mr. Tom, you had your hand up first.
Y'all mentioned how it takes the process. How far along are we in the process? That's, that's what a lot of people want to know. We always hear how long the process is.
Yes.
How far along in that process are we right now?
We are in the requesting funding process stage.
Before you, it didn't even get started?
They've been working on it. Yeah, it, so how long has it taken you to do the water transport application since July? Since July, but before that, you have to do an asset management plan, which we are going to bring a resolution to the city council to update that. So there's so many steps to this that is, I mean, we could draw something up and do a did you know on some of our steps, but there's so many steps to this process that it's hard to pinpoint where we started when there's a lot of different teams in the city working towards it.
And I'm, I'm sure that a lot, I've always wanted to know, you know, if everybody tells me it takes ten years, where are we at in ten years? That's, that's what the common person wants to know, where are we at in the process?
Right.
And, and how many process? So if it, if it takes ten years to do one well, are we still working on just one well? And, and I'm just, fictitious numbers. Um, how many of them wells are we going after working?
So we did six test wells in a two-year timeframe, Chris, is that correct? And I believe we got four working wells out of that, with not very many gallons per minute.
Right.
In the time that I've been here. So that was a two-year period, and that was after we've gotten the funding. So prior to that, it was a few years of getting the funding secured for that reason.
So is the cost?
If I could, if I could just tell that to, go ahead here. When we explain the process that you have applied to the state engineer, the water trust board, you won't find out anything until March.
Till May.
May, or May, and it may be another year after that before you actually get the money to do anything.
And that's for water trust board.
My problem is money.
Is waiting.
It wouldn't be a problem if you let us apply for these funds two years ago.
Right.
Before you hear them. That's, that's sort of the problem wise.
But we did, yeah, but back in, was it twenty twenty?
And it was six years that I've been involved, we've been involved every year. But you have to have all your stuff in order, and you have to comply. Right now, we're going through the readiness, uh, portion of, of the application, which is the same as the city of Palisades. If they pass that readiness application portion, then the next thing would be is that, uh, and they qualify, and they need all of the requirements, then the water trust board will, will actually, uh, put certain, uh, applications on the list for recognition for, for, and then it will go to the legislature. Now, where the legislature will, will, will approve them. There are still more steps. So this, this funding that the city is applying, or that they're telling you about right now, that if, if all goes well, that, that money will not flow as it's available until December, or January, or February of this next year. That's too late for this next summer.
Uh, it was.
Something that you can't count on that.
Right.
You're gonna have to do something different.
Absolutely. And, uh, Mr. Self, it was approximately two million dollars to drill those six test wells, just so you're aware.
Two million for six test wells, and then you said four are working?
Right.
So that two million is included in that?
And just so you know, we do have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was re-drilling and, and casing and everything before that they're.
That was the, that included the entire testing and drilling them to get them up for use. And just to answer the question on the water trust board, we do have an active water trust board grant out now that we're still working off of, based on the, the wells that we're drilling and the stories that we're trying to work on. So it's a continual request.
Question.
Yes.
So would it be true that the state engineer makes a lot of those decisions? Do they have the capability of, of adding things for us? You're talking about red tape. Can the state engineer cut through some of that red tape? Do they have that power or no?
I do not know the answer to that, but I definitely could find out.
I can, I can just. Uh, the Water Bureau has had a lot to do with actually design, uh, the, of the well. They want to make sure that it's safe for the public, so there's wellhead protection, you know, all kinds of different, you know, uh, things that go along with that. They have to approve all of that. The state engineer, uh, uh, does the permitting portion or helps with the permitting. And I, I pay, uh, you know, I spoke to the state engineer just recently, and he said that he is here to help us.
Right.
And he said, I can help expedite things that, but doesn't mean that we can not do things. We have to follow the rules.
Right.
But he can help get it to move quicker.
I can cut through some of the red tape.
That's a little program.
Very good to know. Yes. And Mr. Carter, you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the emergency situation, that there should be a well variety of water. Along with what Orlando's telling you, I've read a lot of, a lot of regulations from office. There are some strong that say you gotta have a well, you gotta protect it from water falling in from the top, you gotta protect it from being anything that's blocking it. And size of the rap is an expectation. And if you can come back with policy of the river. To show that we can handle the sand above rank, the, the, the low bit. They have the power to overrear some of that stuff so that you can drill them the way that it should, that should be. Like Alan said, we, we've had forty, forty, at least forty rivers over our town. And we, we've never drilled dry well. And that, that has nothing to do with, uh, building a wall in San Antonio. The reason we never dry, drilled dry well is you similarly done what Orlando's saying, we've mapped some wells, but that does not work all the time. If you go out, we do, and if you go out and ritual well, you can find out real quick. Alan and I, I, I come into it ten feet before he does. I have to tell him, I come in ten feet after, and I come out ten feet before he does. But I can go out there and I, and I won't be exacting that. But I go out there and I can tell you, if that well even is in water or is in a facility, it will be dumped with water. And I guarantee you with a hundred percent accuracy, it's in there. But we've drilled enough wells from south probability to northern water development. And I can tell you that it can be done. There are people that can do it. It would help with the mapping to go along, just to make bureaucrats satisfied that, hey, this is a feasible place. And you're, you're, then when we, if you can get the authorization in Santa Fe, because you need to, you can do. And if you work it right, all of our emergency and jump into the goose, you can get wells drilled here from here that will produce bad water.
We have another question here, Smith.
Why don't we let these guys go out there and show us how this stuff works?
Cause it's not as easy as just doing that.
I mean, just like a demonstration of sorts, and we know that it's not gonna stop over a case. But, I mean, this is some interesting stuff, but, and I'm saying, if these guys can say, hey, I, I'll show them where some water is, let them show us, let them show us that it works. And then of course, we're still gonna struggle with all those, because, hey, obviously. But it was good truth, much what they're saying, and it might hold at some point.
Yes.
For the very, at the very.
Has the council entertained, uh, privatizing, privatizing the water fields?
We've entertained privatizing the water system, but not the wellfields.
Okay, but the reason I ask that is because I know that, and I'm not, I'm getting a little polluted. I'm not, I'm not one of those poor selling all water that has to, that they can fix. They follow totally different rules once you have a quality.
Right.
Is because they're a private, they're, they're like a farmer, other than the amount of water that they, that they're able to feed. So I know that we get free of feeding, and when it becomes commercialized, the city water, it gets cut down to an acre, maybe an hour, something like that.
Yep.
And so I know that they're that different. However, I know that they get, they drill the well, it's totally different from the city, from how you do the well. They do many things differently because they're a private dealer.
Right.
That sells the water, and they, they ensure the quality of the water at a different step, you know, at the water. And I know that the city's got smart enough water, that we can figure out how the city can continue to own it. But do it through a private organization, entity.
Right.
Out of the water, so if you can get a range, bunch of these things to come, instead of well costing you a million dollars, the left can cost you eighty to a hundred thousand.
I'm gonna answer some more questions online. Uh, who developed the slides and who measured to place us in the darker orange? So the slides were developed by a compilation of staff, research, uh, NOAA, climate.gov is where we got a lot of our, uh, slide pictures from, and it's the one that places in the orange. That's not something that we as staff did. It was actually done by climate.gov, dot gov, excuse me. Um, same question, I just answered it. I thought Aquifer has been depleting from the sixties, why haven't we done anything before crisis popped up? Do the people who lead us to this disaster still have employment with the city of Palis? As far as the Aquifer depleting, there have been measures made, like Mayor Orlando said, they have taken steps for that. Some of it takes a while, some of it doesn't, and we are continually working towards that. What industry uses more water? I would like to see this data specifically on where the water is used. Um, I wrote that question down. I will get data and we will post it on our media sites to answer that question. What is the quality of water? That's an open-ended question, so I'm, I'm not going to answer that. Um, whoever wrote that can email me that question and.
I can refer to them.
Okay.
I've tested water in Palis, Clovis, uh, Millen Sand, Perford, Amarillo, and Canyon for twenty-plus years. And of all of those, the Palis water, uh, in a simple test, which is TDS total dissolved solids, that doesn't go into red mercury, arsenic, those type of contaminants. But in a simple test of TDS, Palis water has, for the entire length of time, surpassed all of those other communities. And Palis comes in under three hundred TDS parts per million. Clovis is to, for comparative purposes, uh, last time I tested, which has been a couple of years, is about four hundred TDS. So quality of water, Palis has some very good water, that's.
How is that related to the, uh, uh, watching that progress as in regard to the quality of water?
You talking about the, the dairy?
The last week.
Okay, that, that's related to a specific area of the.
Facebook, and we were thinking, these are the waters, this is from the Polish region, and how do that fit up? The Palis, they're going to take this progress, they were wanting to know who had great water, but they didn't specify the exact location. I don't believe, and the question, but.
No, it's the PFOS. Yeah.
Right.
That's, that's somewhat of a complicated situation in the south, uh, very southeast, uh, uh, Canyon Air Force Base.
And New Mexico Environment Department does testing for us. And Monday, we got a testing result on PFOS in our water, and there's zero detected. So we're still good, and we can share that on, on our website if we need to for people's.
Their water is so deep, it's not gonna affect Palis lots. Their, their well to three hundred, four hundred, fifteen, there are wells to a hundred, ten, a hundred, sixty, fifteen. And they're red, they're so much older, their water will not depend upon them. Plus it backs up, uh, when we gave that a plan, plus it backs up the theory, and, and Orlando, he touched on, yes. It is an isolated area, but it backs up what we're saying in the stream water, that goes that direction. It should bypass all of the farm water. When it came to the water.
The, the state helps us test for that, and right now we are at a zero detection in Palis. I can't speak on anybody outside of Palis, but Palis is at a zero detection.
Since, since that occurred, you know, it's happened with a lot of places throughout America. So they started testing with PFOS and people, and they're, they're finding out that it's everywhere. I mean, it's in everything that we eat, everything that we wear, and it's gonna retard on the tires, and every time it rains, it's watching them. You know, the veterans, the healthcareers, water systems, so PFOS is gonna be everywhere. Like in some, in some cases, it's gonna be minor, where it doesn't, you know, affect you health-wise. Uh, in the case with Canyon Air Force Base, they use it for, um, for running fires. Uh, or, or, or training for, you know, putting fires up, and it, it was contaminated in that area, and it affected the, the local farmers in that area. If they're trying to contain that, the, the federal government, the, the air forces, they may want to, want to clean it, and, and we're gonna take it out and we're gonna, you know, put it back out of the water, so we'll see them, we'll see what happens.
I'm gonna answer the next two questions together. Uh, why don't you buy out farmers' wells? And then is it possible to purchase private water and thus avoid the red tip of municipal wells? And the answer to that is it's not as easy as just buying farmer's well or private well, because if it's an agricultural well, we have to turn it over to be a municipal well, and there's steps that we have to do to take, to make it potable, drinkable water. So that is something we're actively looking into right now. Um, we have a couple of people who have called privately to say, hey, we're ready to sell our land, and we have wells on it, so we are looking into that actively at this time.
You have bought, uh, wells.
It's doable.
Agricultural wells in the past and convert.
Yes, so it's absolutely doable. It just takes a little bit of time, but we are actively looking at options for that.
You saw, if I may, I, I wanna touch on that. Uh, number one, we're here to, we, we can walk from Palis to sixteen in, in water. I'm not here to dig on, uh, uh, former area of the U Lake project. That's a, that's a long-term plan. We're talking about a, a plan that we can do immediately, that'd be said. We could go out there in the morning. In the morning, and find which wells are in streams and which wells are not in streams. Uh, Councilman Merrick, I don't know if you ever got, he pushed the village to be hard to try if the laws. If those wells that are in the stream are not deep enough, we're only talking about ten or fifteen foot of rig drilling the same hole, calling really working it over when they can double the production. You said last, last meeting, that the, the issue with the stage three is production. And that's what I thought in, in all along.
Yes.
I think you're exactly right, but I think there's some avenue that can, that, that can be worked out with the wellfield, with the well that we already have, that may not be deep enough. And sleeve them or, or repreparate them, you know, if they're, if they're not deep enough. We're talking about three, maybe seven foot of water, twenty foot to fifty foot water. You're talking about, we made it double or triple the production of the well that we've already done. And get us out of this problem.
If, um, you know, if, if, if something could be put.
If, um, you know, if, if, if something could be put together, your technique. And, 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 and structure in a way that, that, that in the state engineer. I think that would be a first step.
Yep.
And, and we, and I'm the one, you're trying to come out and help, get out of this situation. We've talked about, we've talked about strings, but what we have to talk about, we can find a string, but if you're well drilling. Competing really right, competing really deep enough, it's gotta be done.
Right.
Do we know if anybody, I know that's pretty common to re-drill an old well. I would think it would cut the cost. Do we know if that has been done in the past? I'm sorry, what was your question? Do we know what he's talking about, uh, as far as re-drilling an extra seven?
That's a yes.
By reconditioning, you mean go deeper or?
Go deeper, re casing, that kind of stuff has happened. I agree with them as far as like the ground pack and that kind of stuff. I'm interested in how would you deal with the sand? How do you do that on the surface?
Put it up and put stands up to. Like a very good break, just like there's, you build right big casing. You'll, you'll stand ten, fifteen foot near it, and then that water comes in.
How, how much of that setup?
Oh, oh, well, for a farmer, a farmer can get out there and take some metal.
But that could be something that we have to look, I don't know, as far as state engineers stuff. I don't know if that's a possible speed. That's right, I, that's. But again, like with Orlando, you package it in waves.
Your, your water that you always need to sign off on it, and that's, that's. Every water field should have sand, right, and you have some. And you follow the, you follow, you, you think there's a thing for. Is that right?
Yes.
That's where, that creator of muscle power has to be matched, thanks. Because you're not sending stones and out. And that's why we're continuing to call. Because we think we can handle, and you know, with all respect, we know there's a tremendous amount of red tape. But there's, there's some ways to, to, like Alice said, to, to go around if you're, if you're reworking. Oh, well, there's no sense in reworking that well if it's not in the stream. You know, the, the team of success, your, your, your techniques, um, you know, may work. They work. I mean, I'm saying it may work with the city, but, but it has to be in a structured way that the company can accept. Well, and that's the reason I suggested getting inside and, yeah, state engineer is not a problem. But just because of the triograph, doesn't mean it's right as to the, to the, to drill. Then if you come in and you ditch it, whatever you wanna call it, and lay the maps over each other. It was endpoint to satisfaction for the state engineer that, hey, this, and, and, and it's the witching that confirms it. I'm not saying it's been. I'm saying do a process that comes up with a grid, where the true percentages of eating water or real water increase.
We're, we're gonna move on to the questions so we can be respective of everybody's timing, because we have some more slides to share. Uh, how long from starting the well process to having a well? Uh, that's the two to four-year process, depending on the weather, depending on the funding, so about two to four-year process. Is the city of Portales lobbying the state government on the water issue and if so, how is that coming along? We do have what's called ICIP requests in for funding for well expansion and well storage. I know Mr. Merrick has been working hard to talk to some of our representatives in regard to the same, so it's, it's an active.
That's what I was gonna say, sitting on this side is not fun. I've already learned that, real quick. You can't say a whole lot of anything when you're sitting over here. But we are talking to all of those people involved and we have been, Eldon and I have met with some people. In some of those places that we're not allowed to talk about. Um, we are contacting all those people that have the first strings.
Yep.
Um, and we're, we're gonna work as hard as we can. We told you that when we ran and we're gonna do it, but it's kinda frustrating sitting over here and I can't tell you a darn thing I'm doing. But I'm spending a lot of my time working on stuff, so, and Eldon's spending a lot more than I, I can tell you that.
We're trying to get some emergency funding. Cause emergency funding will surpass not having to wait a, a year. It's still gonna be a slow process, but it'll. Jump some of those hurdles.
We, we do have, we do have a grant writer, she's our water grant writer.
The capital outlay funding, if, if you're able to secure that. Will occur in this session, which is happening right now, it can be, we need available as soon as.
But it's not only capital outlay, there's emergency funds available in this session that we may never see again.
Yeah, so they have.
We have been talking to people in the last week and a half on some of that as well. And we're gonna be talking to people in the next two weeks on some of that as well, that are the people in the legislature, so we're, we're. We're trying as hard as we can to get the money so we can do something. Can't do anything without money, that's, that's the fact, that's the bottom line.
Yes.
In their ears every day.
Yes, Justin Reese, Justin Reese is our lobbyist, we brought him on last year. And we just renewed his contract, so he's out there right now, he's checking in with me every day. So he's the one that's lobbying for the city of Portales and he's only working for the city of Portales in this area. But Justin Reese is his name.
So, so, so not that those don't, but if we had a lot, you're wanting to be free or fit about, and you think that's that would be?
Because our senators that we have, they have a one pot of money and they have to share with multiple counties.
Yeah, I understand, but, but the city of Portales didn't get it, it's easier to go.
Right. He was lobbying for us every day, it just depends on who lobbies better or what's heard at the state level. I don't have no jurisdiction. I have, I have no, I can't, I can't say anything about that.
You know, this is something Ellen and I don't agree with. You're never gonna get no money than each. Eastern, eastern falls into a.
Education.
It falls into education and to all senators up there, all representatives up there. The government up there, everybody up there is always gonna give you a relationship fund. Money that you think should come to the city, and the city's got to defend it.
They have the privilege of speaking with Sudi, don't fight that, about why we didn't get on that. City, and I do think things we can do better in the future are definitely to improve our ICIP plan. Our two thirty-four comparative to other people and backdoor comments from other senators in the state. Not Seward, but other people are arguing with you, using exact words. I think some other things that Clovis and its surrounding communities have done really well is working together. Their ICIP plans have gotten into the young generation of others, so if you compare together with. Melrose or other communities or even the water pull-up, the more entities you get asking for a singular item in ICIP. I think the more possibility of us being qualified to do very well. And if we can get each and all more, that would be great.
Well, and he, and he said he would, he, well, he'd like that, he didn't think.
We've also did have a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor not too long ago to let her know about our water needs and things like that, so. I feel like everybody right now is actively trying. Um, may not have been as hard last year, but to be fair to the city. If, whether or not we were told that our ICIP was a joke, like we genuinely tried hard on that. And we improved it by learning, by hearing what everybody had to say this year, so we did revamp it, we turned in something brand new. Um, a little more creative, we did ask for funds with the university. We still have yet to hear back on that and that was a federal grant, so we, we really genuinely are trying and it's, I feel like it's even more harder now. With the new council coming in and the other council helping, reaching out to our senators or lieutenant governor, we're, we're doing what we can. Yes, Mr. Carl?
One of the things, getting kind of the first point, uh, of being collaborative, uh. Several years ago, and the city was the driver of this. I'd like to take credit for it, but it wasn't the chamber did it. City was the driver of putting everybody in the same, that they organized it. Uh, put everybody in the same room for several years running, uh, you know, we brought the legislators to. Uh, um, town hall meeting and, and everybody did a presentation on what, uh, what their, how their ICIP. List was going to affect, uh, the community and that gave everybody. I mean, not, not all of our legislators are from this, uh, community and we, we've been having, uh, I think those. We're getting in, uh, um, like, uh, some of the northern, some, some east side folks that. That will, will go back for you, but, uh, don't necessarily know what you're struggling with. And we need to get back to doing that and, uh, you know, I.
Absolutely.
I think that's one of the things that the chamber may outline, wanted to do, um, when we bring that through our board. That, that we try to, try to make that something that close to, that do a breakfast that, that does the same thing. We get a, a, a real formal process of, uh, uh, that in a town hall like this. And I think, I think we're better at that one. And I, I think city staff, uh, brought everybody's, uh, stuff in and bound it up for the legislators, so. When they got there, they had everybody, uh, the whole community's, uh, wish list in a, in a binder. And, uh, so we need to, we need to work on that for, for next year.
Absolutely.
Uh, because I, you know, I think, uh, I think it's correct.
What time of year did you host that?
Correct, I think that's where, where we, we dropped off, uh, the ICIP was.
And what time of year did you guys host that?
It, this, this was in December.
Okay.
Early December, and that's kind of the timeframe that Clovis, you go earlier than that, it's, it's tough.
Go later.
Very, maybe have barely wrapped up your process by then, uh, maybe they're doing now. To know that, back then, they weren't, they, they weren't even two, uh, at that point in time, but, uh. You know, whatever, it needs to get you guys all through your, your, uh. Formal process of developing those and it would be something that, and hey, you know, this. One of our, our issues has been city, county, let's get everybody in the same room and, and share our, share our problems and do work together.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's something that, uh, this, that was occurring and it's not occurring now for some reason.
Okay.
And it was, it was, I, I, I gotta admit that it was, it was the city that was driving that at the time, I was probably a fonder. But you know what, I'm that, I mean, uh, we needed to do that.
Yeah, ICIP is critically important because, uh, every, your projects have to be on that ICIP and that sort of projects.
Yep.
Uh, so when you make that request, when you, when you fill out that capital outlay form. It, it electronically, it, it adds that, that, that ICIP to it. So the legislative finance committee, their analysts go through all of these projects, all of these requests and they analyze it. They determine whether they have merit or not, and then they make recommendations to your, your legislative boards and everyone else. So all of that is critically important.
The, the list might, the, the bullet list might be, for the legislators, but. They, they'll, they're gonna send it across the hall and, and, and the, the budget analyst will look at it. And they'll, they'll mark it up, send it back, and if it's not, not looking right. You're, 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 they're, they can't, they don't have a leg to stand on with.
Right. Ms. Baca?
It, it, you don't find, uh, I understand the concern with all the oil wells. And I think that us citizens are living on high dream. Because I understand that the youth is gonna be bringing us water in, what, twenty thirty?
Around twenty thirty.
Okay, so what are we doing right now? Obviously, well drilling is, it takes us two years to go into that, so. My, that, my thing right now is right now, we, we are right now in the winter, we're still on level three. And nothing's really ever changed. And us as citizens need to be working just as hard as our council. And everybody else that is working for us, we need to be responsible to, to, for the water use that we have. Over there, using. Now, I voiced my opinion in one of the council meetings concerning the pool. Um, that was in the top ten, and if we're in this level three. I'm sorry, but if we give grants for parks for state parks, let's build in the pool and put the park there. Because we don't need to be having things built or anything else like that. So we as a city need to start looking at things that help us now. We can't wait for twenty years, we can't wait for two years down the line. Or never to give wells through. Us as citizens, we need to do our due diligence to resolve some of the issues, kind of bring the pressure off. So I would like to know, is there any type of grants that we can probably go and get? To help people zero-scape some of their yard?
We are in the process trying to find out what those grants are, but yes, it's a great idea. And as far as the pool goes, we will not be opening our pool this year, we will be partnering with E N M U. For them to offer their pool to the community, so we have one pool not to.
Okay, that's one pool that we really don't need.
Right.
Not even here, we could twenty thirty, because youth honestly is not that big. And by the time it gets to Portales, how many other places is it hidden? But will we get, it gets here and how long is that water gonna be sustained? For it to continue for us to be here.
Right.
With water.
I know that the pool is not a priority because we are focusing on water, our animal control facility, uh, needing ambulances, things like that. So the pool is not a priority right now. And as far as getting, um, grants for our parks and stuff, we have another grant writer that we got a grant to get her for, that writes those grants, and so. Just so everybody knows, we have different people working to get monies for the city and I'd rather see us get. Funding for whatever it is for Portales and it goes somewhere else.
Well, even grants to help people can't, can't afford to downsize their yards. So that we're not overwatering.
So we're looking at incentives for that, maybe we can do a rate structure on the water bill. Like, we are compiling what we can to offer it to the public and when we get to that point, we'll host another town hall to talk about it.
And I can add to that a little bit, we, I sent two grants to our grant writer, who's much better at it than I am. Uh, this week of the Land Management Bureau. That is trying to encourage people to switch to native plants that handle drought vectors. See if that's something they would allow us to do as a, a rebate for people who switch their yards back to. Green grass versus state and she's still looking at it. So we are looking at some of those grants. Uh, the zero-scape grants, we haven't had a very good luck finding, but sometimes switching back to drought-resistant brasses. Um, it's not as pretty as a nice lush green lawn, but it's better for the ecosystem and it doesn't need as much water. So we're hoping one of those will pop, if it doesn't, we'll keep looking.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at the USDA grants as well.
You're saying, individual.
Yeah.
Hold on, you walk out there and walk in the door and say, hey, I'd like to work on, is there a problem in the city that does it? And not at the water agency.
There are some, I've been going to USDA, I've been going to the water conservation meetings for the last four months, five months.
So there should be some.
There are some things, um, and I'm trying to work actively with them to try to find some more ways that they can help us as well. That's another avenue that we've been pursuing is the Seoul Water Conservation District.
But like, I'm talking about.
But it will, yeah, for community now, for community, yeah.
You're, you're talking about community, I'm talking about an individual.
Right.
Can go out and find out if there's lots of problems out there. I think there are. You know, the, the community has done a great job of water conservation. In fact, when we started the conservation program some twenty-five years ago. You know, we dropped usage by a tremendous amount. So I applaud everyone in this community for doing their part. We can always do better for us, you know, but we've done a lot. Well, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what it bothers me. What it bothers me is when the little old lady or the little old man was on the fixed end and can't play the water, but they're doing a stuff. I have no problem with the, the milk company paying a pile of way. I have no problem with bankers out there that are rushing the trucks paying a pile of way. But when the little old lady that, that has to have four thousand gallons a month plus the pool, it can be the dish. That's when I, that's when I have a problem.
Right, we're gonna answer some more questions so we can keep, um, keep moving along. Um, how's the talk with Epcor been? Um, we did have some meetings with Epcor, it's still an ongoing process, I don't have anything new to give on that. Um, can the Army of Corps of Engineers be the lights to help speed up the pipeline project? That would be a Mayor Ortega question, I don't know the answer to that one.
Army, Army.
Corps of Engineers, yeah, help you with the.
Yeah, they're, they're, I'm charged with that project with U S Bureau of Recreation.
Very good. Um, why is it so hard to reach anyone at the city hall? Um, I'm sorry if you feel like that. We did change our phone tree to go to somebody at all times. So it could be when somebody's at lunch. Um, I encourage you to try, be patient with us. We are continually working to figure out what phone line is not being answered. So if you could email me at citymanager@portalsnm.gov and tell me which phone line you can't get ahold of somebody on, we will get it fixed. Who are the grant writers? We have Ashley, who is our water wastewater grant writer, and we have Joe McVey, who is all of our other grant writer projects person. And the last, oh, there was a house fire on University Drive and the fire department had to bring in a tank trailer to help fight the fire, how many hydrants the city had and how many are inoperable. We have three hundred and eighteen fire hydrants that were recently tested and fifty nine are inoperable. We're actively working with the fire department and the water department to get those fire hydrants fixed. It could be simple as a fitting that needs to be replaced or the fire hydrant's completely out. We do have some on standby that we're going to replace the really bad ones with and that's an ongoing process for the next few months, but we are expediting it.
Is there water to all those black hydrants?
So there could be, um, well, so our, well, we, we gotta get out there and see. So when we get the report, the report doesn't tell us. It just tells us they're inoperable.
Sometimes, sometimes it could just be a, a leaky gasket out of the bonnet. Sometimes it's the nozzle that's leaking or it might be the.
People fail after, after serving those with the water there at all.
Well, there's water that goes to all three hundred and eighteen hydrants, yes, but can water come out of it at this time? We need to get out there and figure out what the problem is.
To answer your question, there is water to every hydrant. Yes, the hydrant, it's the hydrant that's.
The what? I mean, I mean, we could have put incident infrastructure that went around that.
Well, they wouldn't be able to test them if there was no water. So they felt, whatever reason they felt for, we are going to rectify. Um, and does the city have short term and long term goals? Yes, we do. We constantly work on those and update those. Some of us are new. Please introduce members and what district they represent. If you knew, council people would be kind enough to share what, uh, district you represent in your names, please.
Uh, I'm Mike Rackler. I'm Ward D, newly appointed.
Diane's in Ward D.
Oh, my name is Diane Parker. I'm Ward D also.
I'm Eldon Merrick. I'm Ward C.
Russ and Self, I'm Ward B.
And we are staffed. We have Chris Mendoza with the Water Department, Kelly McLellan with Community Services, Ashley, which is our grant projects person, and she does a lot of different water wastewater stuff and I am the city manager Sarah. Yes, Mr. Carter?
One more question. I want to commend y'all for doing this.
Thank you.
I think it's important for the community, uh, because you know, when we come to the council meeting, we hear our tenants and we don't get any feedback. You know, and I really think this is important and, and, and I think you guys are on the right track. I hope it helps the community before you can do some different ideas, different input. Uh, maybe even a different direction. And I really, I really appreciate you guys doing this. Because we do need to work together. It doesn't matter what part of your, that, that, that's your building. We've got an issue here. We need to work with y'all. We need to work with the county, we need to work with the county. We've, we've got some issue with the county and, uh, I really appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Um, I can, my staff, the new council, the, um, I'm, uh, the council that's been here, everybody's, is working. I know that we don't see progress every single day and I'm sorry for that, but come with us, consider the city with us, see what we're doing actively. I mean, we genuinely are trying to do what we can to improve the situation.
I've got one thing. I wish the whole council should, I wish that the other members and, and they make, some of them may be in Santa Fe, some of them may not. But yet they could have been here, they didn't stay out on, on, I think, very well presented. And, and no one's here, it was one, I didn't hear a single source that just went, I don't know, one time. And I think it was turned on, I, and I agree with that, I just wish that all council members had.
So Mayor, Mayor Miller is in Santa Fe for the session and Ms. Cordova, she does work, a few branches at her bank she's responsible for. And she got stuck in Santa Rosa. Um, she does express her apologies. She was trying to get here. She's messaging me in between some of the questions. So she's trying to participate as safely as possible. Yes. Um, so can we go on to the next slide, please?
In fact, just to make a comment, I think one of the important things here, you know, Lucy, I'm angry with all of it. It's good that we all come together and talk about these things and respect each other. Uh, but I think we need to really focus on how can we get out of this situation now.
Yeah.
Not two years down the road or when that grant comes down the road by now, but also I'd like the idea of we need to continue to plan some future and make sure that we follow, you know, follow all of our planning and my steps. So we don't put ourselves in the situation.
Yep.
Can, can I, uh, reach on that topic?
Of course.
Given that, um, it's my understanding that somebody approved a post on the city that we would be out of stage three approximately December first, December third. Um, that time came and passed.
Right.
No update, no, what, what, where are we, where are we at on that?
We did provide an update at a city council meeting. So our goal was to try and come out of that stage based on where our water well maintenance was at and based off the maintenance and off of the wells that are down right now, we are still not making any more water. So if we go out of the stage, we're still faced with the same problem. Our tanks will drop. We will not be able to maintain a safe level. And so that's where we're at right now is not, we have no more production versus the demand and we'll, we'll hit that on some of these slides.
If we don't add to what we already have, we're not ever going to be that stage three.
And that's what we're working, we're actively working towards adding more storage and more water right now.
But the storage isn't quite as important as the production.
Right. Next slide, please. The city has three storage tanks. The city of Portales uses gas chlorination for disinfection. There are three million gallons of, uh, there, excuse me, tanks are three million gallon storage tanks at thirty two feet wind full. Tanks are filled up from the top. Tanks need to keep a refill, need to keep a fill consistent to meet a twenty PSI or greater to provide the best quality water to the community and stay compliant with N M E D. The focus is health, safety and sanitation and to provide fresh, clean drinking water at adequate pressure. Next slide, please. Depletion of water supply in tanks and this is kind of where, why we went into our restrictions. The city of Portales water system is gravity fed. Each storage tank is three million gallons of storage. Each foot of water in the storage tank equals one hundred thousand gallons of water. The water system must maintain twenty PSI or greater to meet the standards needs to function. Two point one, three one feet equal one PSI. If the city isn't able to maintain such pressure, the system is inadequate and would be in violation within state regulations. Anything under twenty PSI is a mandatory boil notice and needs to be issued per regulation. Inadequate pressure could cause back siphonage and/or could airlock in the system. The city well field draws from the Ogallala Aquifer. The city of Portales water supply is groundwater. The city has a total of thirty seven active wells with several wells resting at this time. The city well field can currently pump zero to twenty five hundred gallons per minute. Twenty five hundred gallons is the actual max amount that the field can pump. This gives the water distribution system and well no room for error. The water supply demand changes every day and will never be a set number. The water supply demand is based on a seasonal chart. Just like your bank account, you have funds that come in and funds that are in your bank and the funds are going to pay bills. The same concept holds for groundwater. Concepts, right? We look at water coming in and water in the storage, filling the space between the granules of soil and sediment and water going out through the withdrawals into the seams or across geological boundaries. It is called depletion. And it occurs when the rate of water loss outstrips recharge the water coming back into the system. How much water do we use? I was shocked to know that toilets take twenty four percent of water and your showers are twenty percent. Like that's a lot of water with just those two items.
Is that a household average? Where did that come from? Cause that's not my house.
Yeah, right. So that, that came off a website and I can't remember the website that I found it on, but it's.
Some of it's like, I mean.
It's a total average. It's, it's.
Okay, a household average?
It's a total household average.
That's, that's.
But if you have a leaky toilet, you could rack up a sixty eight thousand.
Oh, yeah, I, I wear that as a property manager. Believe me, I know.
Yeah, but I don't know that everybody else understands like a leaky toilet is a huge, huge deal. Sixty eight thousand gallons for your toilet leaking in twenty four hours. That's, that's a lot of water.
That, that's not including irrigation, water on the lawn.
We didn't put that in that, no.
It's just housing.
Um, in a month's time, if your toilet leaks for an entire month, you could have sixty eight thousand gallons.
I'm at sixty eight thousand. The twenty four thousand, twenty four percent, I thought you, I thought that they, uh, twenty four percent of a, of a homeowner's bill or twenty four percent of the indoor.
And that was off the month.
That was off the month.
That's, it's just a bait or no, sorry.
They taking consideration, but it doesn't show in there that you're using, um, it just says other and I don't know if that's lawns because we didn't get.
They, they don't, that's not off the, it's off the, that's the daily, daily indoor usage is what that's on.
Okay, that's already, that's all, that was kind of blowing my mind.
And we, and we talked earlier about, about get, finding money for people to do things that are more conserve, more conserve more water. Things like toilets that are actually water conserving toilets. And we don't, we have them all over town that are just the old three gallon, every time you flush the toilet all over this town. And if people would just take that one step to buy a hundred dollar toilet and replace their toilet with one that's water efficient. You'd see a dramatic change in the water in this town with, if everybody got their toilet where it was up to code, you'd be surprised. Right, and that's one of the things we're talking about.
I, I think.
For signage and other things, I know it's technically for ethically developed, but water conservation.
Would be part of it. That's definitely something we can look into.
There's gotta be some out there. I know that EFCOR at one time, whenever they took over, they had a program that they, they gave people float valves and things to replace in the toilet to use less water.
Make a lot of difference.
Of course, I got bed floor and not a, a governmental.
It, it is, but I mean, they get, they get grants also.
When I was recloaked, sorry, when I was, when I was recloaked during the, uh, oh, and I, I should remind these people, terrible tragedy a couple that I feel years ago, um. Anyhow, it was a, they put together a program, it was the state that, there was a program out there to, uh, help elderly people and shut in people with different things like, uh, fire extinguishers, smoke alarms, stuff like that. We even done windows in a house. Or smaller, it was a house for, suppose, um, if it was something like that, that, you know, if we could find a couple of contractors maybe, uh, you know, home improvement place, um, that we could, you know, kind of help out with the, the float valves and stuff like that. And, and, you know, kick something off, community project as far as that goes, I think.
And we do have, like, like Ms. Hamilton said, we have lots of, um, other pots we can dip into. It's just a matter of finding what, what we can actually legally use it for. So lead is a good thing to look into, possibly lodgers tax. I mean, we have some pots we can definitely look at, see what we can do with. Yes, Mr. Carter?
Just information, about a month ago, maybe, maybe two months ago, I got a phone call from, I'm on the call. I'm not on city water, but I am on city water, pretty cool. And I got a phone call from the floor. How worried that our water usage is going to be? Do we have a toilet stuck or something? Well, evidently they put new meters on that talks to them all the time.
Right.
And so through the night, we had a toilet that, that flushed and pumped and we didn't hear it.
Wow.
And they called him the next morning, my dealer in the block at home, because they called me and said, hey, you got a problem? And I found the problem immediately and went down through value, got, fix it, fix it. And we just waited for the bill to come in because we knew it was going to be, it'd be changed. So they, through that system, they saved us. Has the city got anything coming on board or anything?
We have, we have the A M R system. We, we're on census and we have A M R system.
And they, they do make those calls. I get them, I get them at, at my business a lot for, for properties that are, that are used.
It'll, it'll send.
They'll give me a call and say, this property that you manage is using, that does, and they even say, look, it was running water from two in the morning to six in the morning. Which is an unusual time for water to be running. So we do, the city does do.
If our normal usage had increased by twenty gallons an hour.
I do know, you know, we, we're a little short staffed right now, so I don't know if those calls are coming out at the frequency they were.
And she does get those.
Yeah, but we, I do get them.
We have four thousand accounts too that we have.
Yeah.
Through as well.
But I do know they, they do make those calls.
Next slide, please. This is a, a very good depiction of what our water tank looks like. And I know Mr. Tom called me one day and was like, um, it shows that we are very empty. Are we, should we, we worry? And I told him, no, sir, you're reading it backwards. So thirty two feet at the top.
It's on a float system.
Being scary is at the bottom. So it's on a float system, right?
Didn't know, I made sure I told Facebook.
Yeah.
Well, can you go back a slide, please?
Yeah.
Can, can you explain to me, because my math doesn't work to go from one foot to thirty two and that's sixteen feet. So somebody tell me what the sixteen is. Is that just showing the middle?
Yeah, that's showing half. Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't even know they.
Sorry, I'm a math guy. That just didn't work.
So this, um, I like the, the demand versus precipitation on the left side and on the right side. When a well grows, goes dry due to drought, it means the water table dropped below the level of the pump. I like seeing that. I'm a visual person. So that was, um, I thought it was good to add that in there just, just for a visual aid. Um, Charlie Wilson, he, um, Mr. Mayor Ortega said he does our, uh, reporting and he still does it. He's working on our report for this year. Um, he did state in December of twenty twenty two that we, uh, we need to bridge the eight year gap with a two-pronged approach would be to increase the supply and reduce the, the demand through water conservation. Um, I know that we are not excited about not being able to water a lawn, but right now that is the best water conservation that we can do based on our demand and production. The saturated thickness in this well dropped from a hundred and forty feet in nineteen seventy to twenty eight feet as of today. As a result, the yield dropped from over six hundred gallons per minute to fifty four gallons per minute today. And that's in the Blackwater Four, which is one of the city's best wells. One of the earlier slides talked about that same, uh, well, it was one that really produced and now we're, we're at fifty four gallons a minute if we're lucky. Does anybody have any questions on the previous slides that we just went over? Yes.
How long this been?
A while.
Yeah, back in, probably around two thousand and two. When it audit, your audit is like a school war or a school, or financially, you know, without audit three years before you have to turn it over. What it's a process only, you know, but he may be the greatest down going, I'd like to the floor, I can channel. Are we getting recycled data? How often this field actually has, um, meter, where this evening is the protection? And might it be a good time for possibly looking outside with a different consultant to give a better perspective on whether we actually have more of a thing? Because twenty years, you know, I like my doctors. They're great, they look in twenty years. Sometimes I go somewhere else to give another opinion.
Fair enough.
Suggest or ask, was the consideration possibly using different?
So we're required to put out his report every year or that report every year, but at the same time, we've hired on Wilson and Company to come in and do an overall health and wellness of our wellfields. Different company. Yeah, sorry, different company. Yeah, so Wilson and Company is an engineering firm here in New Mexico. They have stations all over New Mexico. And they're actually looking at the health and wellness of our, our wells, um, our water system, our piping, everything. They're looking at everything. So um, I have a meeting set up with them in the next week. So I'm hoping to have some information to bring to you or invite them to city council meeting to give everybody an update.
And, and all of you know that, that talked to me before I ran, I, I'm still pushing to try to get the talks with EPCOR back in full swing and I still want them to come in and evaluate our system. That's been my thing for the longest time. I still want to just at least let them look at our system and tell us their point of view and what they could offer us. And I'm still gonna keep pushing for that for.
Um, I believe that there's someone else that.
Yes, yes.
Can you provide us the data? The well, does, does the city provide these numbers?
Yes.
And then there's building, need to spread shoot all of the numbers we get.
Off of our data, yes.
Yes, we do a month to month and we accumulate that within a month or in a year and then we get that to Charlie Wilson. And he determines every, all his information from that. He does an audit on our utility billing and all of that.
Yeah, to my pleasure, two days, we had an outside solution.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yes, sir.
So my question, uh, speaking softly, we said we had an outsider. Well, driller or well. Well, driller or well expert, what is looking over his shoulder? In other words, my 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 question is, job security comes up pretty good, and I re- and the reason I bring this up is because I have to ask. Some woman on well drill. Just been on the well, goes, well, what are you doing? Well, we're rushing, well, why aren't you rushing? Well, we just didn't want to stay in the nears, tell us to do. So so why are we spending money, get to him, reiterating. Why would, why would we spend tax dollars money on a well? That's not even in the stream. And so, I I guess what I'm saying is, whoever you hire, you have to trust this.
Right.
Here.
Right.
Are are you going on the question?
I've I've got some of the well logs.
So do well logs tell you where the pump sits compared to right there to the bottom of the?
No. Not that I've seen.
Okay.
There shouldn't be record.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's got to be a record hidden place, and and the reason I say that is because. Right here on that fifty-three gallon well, I'm gonna couple of slides back. It stated the water saturation in the ground twenty-eight feet. Well, if you've got a five-force pump, and I don't. You've got a five-force pump and red bed, which is a glass pot. It's right here, and that pump was setting five, ten to above. That that five-force pump is gonna be cut in half if you want it to spank the front. Because that water comes down and starts to get. That's the reason it's very important, red bed in our area, there's a false red, there's several different areas, right? There's some areas have two or three set of false red bed. And is before you actually get to the the actual red bed that you need to be to. But that red bed, in our area, is anywhere from a hundred and twenty feet down to a hundred and eighty feet in the area that y'all talk. That red bed need is is anywhere from twenty feet to a hundred feet thick. So that red bed needs to be penetrated at a minimum of five foot, preferably ten foot. Because when your real welders go out, they're used to working ten or twenty foot joints. And they don't mess with five-foot joint very well. So if you need to be down the lower red bed, so that you get full access to the twenty-five. Feet of saturation in that area. If that's not happening, that's a lot of good protection.
Thank you.
Bit and I play, it's in formular, water cannot be painted above. Uh, there is a requirement to bit and I play line of there, there there were boons. And once those boons are play line, unless something goes in and disturbs it, that water cannot be.
Alan, you're talking about, your method is, you're you're going uh deeper into the red. You're basically creating a sun.
You you have, you have to, it's just like in a basement, if you've got a sump pump in a basement. And they didn't build a cavity to set that sump pump down in that basement, you're never gonna pump all the water in. So a well is exactly the same thing, you've got to go low into the red bed. Some feet so that you can get that sump and know that, so that that water, that twenty-eight foot of water. That's running along that red bed that has a place so that pump into that. It's setting up above, it doesn't matter that you got twenty-eight foot of saturated, like that, for example. That twenty-eight foot saturated water, that means you got twenty-eight foot of water. That pump said, the water that pump is setting ten feet high, you just touch your saturated water at eighteen foot. You only get eighteen foot of that water, not getting the whole thing in. So those wells must be set at a low rate.
I didn't say I liked it. I know it, I like it.
Get red bed and you drop that pump up three foot off red bed.
Right.
So you have a three-foot thickness of a twenty-foot.
Right.
Or a forty-foot, well, how much cubic water is that?
Yeah.
You know, you're you're talking about fifty-four gallons a minute, it it easily, easily double, maybe triple.
I get that it's important, we need to know where the boats are.
When the, when those Alas wells were put in by, for Agnes, they just, they just punched them. They they didn't, they didn't pay a lot of attention to whether where they were putting them. They knew they were out there, that they had good water, and they just punched them.
Yeah.
Back in those days, they didn't even.
So they didn't have the extra piping and the extra water, but in today's time, you can't.
Yeah, and then normally they would hit the red bed until they started pumping that out of the pot. And then then it's like chasing this and putting their pump, and they would raise that pump above it, I think they still do that.
See, and 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 back in the day, when they know they wanted it in school. The welders could really even get water, so they just stuck the well, that's the well of the deal. A lot of the connections, I'm surprised you got something else, but the water, the water, you're not right, and then you want to do it quick.
So when you ever in the city of Peralos is supposed to use this method that you're that you're proposing. Uh, all of that has to be drawn and and accepted. So, you know, the engineer that that the city will hire, because they'll have to hire engineers, they have to, because it has to be. But anyway, it has to be done and it has to be on paper and in 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 design. So it can be approved in order to do that, that's what I'm getting at. And you know, I think if you if you feel strongly that that works and it's wrong, you. Then then then, you know, maybe it's worth attempting that. And and see it if it if it can be approved. And then try one, then then we can say, hey, the Allen, Allen Brothers came and saved us.
Well, we did, I just did one, I just did one three weeks ago, four, about four weeks ago on Globe Street. And I'll tell them, um, it's all about, and we went over a doubt, it's a new book, we just put her down. And they went in there and they they drilled down fifty foot and said, oh, it's too hard, it's too hard, and I told, I told the guy that. That I was helping, I said, I was gonna throw that rock, people don't listen to me. And so, well, that's here, well, girl, I told that to the owner. And so he went back to the little driller and he said, we gotta live over fifty foot, fifty foot told me he didn't have a clue what he was doing. So we lived fifty foot downstream, we stayed right in the middle of the stream, he hit a seventy-five gallon a minute with a five-four. We don't have good ideas, but that's all we put in there, perhaps what.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on, um, I wanna be respectful of everybody's time again, guys, thank you. Thank you, um, why did the city shut the co-op water off on Friday at five? This caused a lot of people to be upset as they couldn't call anyone to get answers. I'm not going to answer any co-op questions, we're in litigation and that's all I'm going to say about that. If we come off of restrictions and levels fall too low, could it permanently damage the system to the point that we have no water? Yes, the answer to that is yes, I can't simplify that any more than that. Why was it not possible to allow people to water maybe once a week? I personally drove out and checked the tanks and they were dang near full most of the summer after the safe street. That is because we weren't watering, we weren't, we're not making any more water, so we can't come off of restrictions for that reason as much as we want to. We're not making any more water and because we stopped watering, that's keeping our tanks to a very good level. But if even if we allow once a week, we could have the challenge of our tanks not replenishing and Mr. Mendoza had to step out. So, um, what I'm supposed to be sharing with you is it's about production, having availability of water, not making anymore, we've not been to a point where we've brought in more water yet. Is there an emergency contingency plan to supply the city with water if the wellfields can no longer keep the storage tanks at necessary level? Without water, the town would gra- grind to a halt, there is an emergency plan. Um, Mendoza knows a little bit more about that, fortunately, we hadn't had to use that. So, um, when we talk about our new water plan, our new water drought plan. It's gonna put us in a different level that we will go over at that point, so I wanna wait to kind of answer that question here in a few minutes. What do you consider is the most important use of your water, this is a question, if everybody could please answer on their phones?
Uh, anyway, Sarah, while they're answering that, I wanted to actually follow up, so that we came off restrictions, everyone watered, we fell below that, we could have no water.
Right.
Like I hadn't actually heard that before.
So so what happens is it drops our tanks to a level that we can't get it back up.
So we'd have to like actually have it fixed, it might be like a void situation for a while.
Right.
Flints, I guess, would be, okay.
The problem with it is where where gravity fit, so where it's, it's important to keep those things full, or at least above twenty PSI.
We can look for funding for to be something other than gravity fed, and I'm not a well guy, so just understand, I'm asking. Common everyday guy question, but why can't we put in some kind of pump, pump it to town instead of using gravity?
Most efficient means.
Well, I get gravity's most efficient, but we're not in a most efficient situation, we're in a dire situation.
It's all about funding as well, so what efficiency, you're right. I mean, there are all options that we're willing to look at at this point, that the, we're not saying no to anything, so these are, these are good statements and questions. Uh, so people are talking about consumption, flushing toilets, household and at least enough on my yard for my pets. Uh, dishes, bathing, daily necessities, sanitation, being able to drink, flush toilets, wash clothes. Sanitary use, I'd like to have water to drink. So. My water department works very hard, contrary to the public scrutiny and not understanding what they go through, but. Christopher Mendoza put it the best, he, his responsibility is to bring potable, drinkable water to the city. And with everybody being upset that they can't water their lawns, remember you can still turn on your faucet and have drinkable water. Water that you can bathe with and that you can cook with, and that is their priority, is to make sure you have your human consumption needs taken care of first. And secondary, we are working to bring in water so we can water our lawns and increase the beautification of our town. That is definitely in our goals, but our number one goal is to make sure that you have water for your basic human consumption needs.
If I could just check on Mike here real quick, Mike, your your money would be spent in developing more wells than than pumps. To keep that, to keep that.
I love this slide, because it's tips for conserving water around the house and garden, maybe somebody didn't know that these are options, so water plants. And shrubs early in the day or at night to reduce evaporate evaporation, which means the water stays with your plants longer. Choose droughts tolerant indoor native plants, shrubs and trees at all stages. Use mulch under the trees and plants to help maintain or retain the moisture at all stages. Use a rain barrel to collect water for landscape use, um, refer to NMED website for those guidelines. Repair leaky faucets and toilets to reduce indoor water use. Choose sustainable products that carry the Environmental Protection Agency's water sensolabel. And then, you know, you have gray water, there's a lot of things you can do, and I know a lot of people think when it rains today. That we are, that water's hitting our water table, it can take more than seven years for that water to reach the water table, so. When it rains today, it's a long time before we get to see it, and when we get no rain, we go that whole time without getting any addition to our water tables. Um, like I hit on gray water is a really good one, um, and any, these are things that you guys can do at home to help water conserve. And these are things that we'll be working on to push and offering incentives for. Yes, ma'am. So I I don't think, we can't put it back in the system once it leaks out, but there might be ways where we could offer it to. I don't know, maybe look at offering the water lawns or fill somebody's swimming pool with that water that we leaked out. The other thing, we have our fire hydrants and we flush them, that's flushing lots of water right there too, is there a way to capture it? We're not sure about that, but that's definitely something that we can look into. Yes, ma'am. So we would like to talk about the cause and effect for stage three water restrictions. Um, this graph, and we're gonna post just the graph online for you guys to see, but this is the graph we use when we went into the restrictions. So at the right-hand side, um, it, let me see if I can zoom in, so I know you guys can't zoom in, but we will put it on our website for you guys to look at it. On six twenty, between six twenty-one and six twenty-five, um, we started seeing it drop, and then towards the end of the month, we asked to go into the stage three. Once we went into the stage three on six twenty-nine, that's when it started going up. That was because we did our water restriction stages. The cause, community exceeding nonessential water needs, example of essential water needs, um, nonessential water needs, excuse me. Car washing, watering lawns, pools, fountains, pavement washing, causing the demand to exceed the daily production. The effect makes it difficult for us to stay in compliance with the governing agencies for the safe drinking water. Such as the EPA, NMED, and American Water Works, we do follow all of those guidelines in correlation.
Oh, Sarah, I know one of the things I'd like to see us do, and I know everybody can't see that graph, but I had it ahead of time, so I was able to look at it closer. The times of the day that we're taking data, as far as somebody with statistics background like I am, that that data would not be valid. Because if you're gonna take data on a daily basis, it needs to be every day, and it needs to be every day at a specific time. Because if you compare noon on one day to nine o'clock at night on another day, that's that's not comparable, it's night, it's night. It's literally night and day, I mean, it's just not comparable.
This is the the way our system rate gives us the data and that's how we got it.
So we need to try to find a way to take our readings at a accurate time on a daily basis so that we're seeing valid data.
Okay, fair enough. So we're gonna talk about our water efficiency plan, which is going to replace our drought, um, our drought plan. And we have not brought it to council yet, so I'm not producing the whole document to you guys. Um, I need council to see it first to be fair to them, and then we will discuss it at a council meeting and everybody will go copy at that point. So the purpose of the wet plan, water efficiency plan, has been developed to provide the city with a framework of coordinating. A response to water supply production emergencies, including drought and infrastructure or equipment failures. The purpose of the web is to establish an effective and systemic approach to identifying and dealing with unforeseen circumstances arising through such emergencies. I would like the community to know that we had a committee that did this plan. We had Mr. Davidson, Mr. Tom, we also had Mr. Eldon and Mr. Rackler in on this, and so. It was a collaboration of different people on it, not just the city, and so, um. Mike probably gave me the most changes to to put in there. And the most suggestions on how to make it understandable by everybody, to be fair to everybody, to understand it. So thank you for the committee for that. The monitoring system, the water department shall take projections for project production versus demand based on the following. They will make assessments in production in comparison to historical and normal on soil moist- moisture. Recipitation, temperature, evaporative demand, fire conditions and agricultural levels. This is just a little bit of what they take into consideration when they're monitoring, they also monitor daily input output. I mean, there's so much to it that I didn't have enough slides to put it in there, and I didn't wanna keep you guys here till midnight. Next slide. This is our plan activation, so this is the plan that everybody's gonna be paying attention to, so it starts at zero, that means we have. All this water we can use at whatever rate we need to use it at, and there's no worry about it not being available. Second, response level will be stage one, third, second, um, sorry. Zero response level, first stage response level, second, third, and then emergency stage, so right now our drought plan says we're in an emergency stage. But if we were to use this plan, we would be in a severe stage, meaning our demand would be low seventy-four percent of what the water demand is. Do you have any, um, do you have any questions on this last couple of slides or anything else?
Sarah, if I may, uh, I know that the community had actually a request that, you know, they're on the planet, shows. When we go into restrictions and then what it's gonna take to come out of restrictions.
Right.
So, um, I just want to make sure that we can take that into consideration.
We did, and we also have it in there where e- every two weeks it'll be brought to a council meeting for council review, and if council. Suggests to pull it back or not, that will all be discussed at at an actual city council meeting.
One of the things that I'd like to see the committee look at too is we've, I've talked to a lot of community members that feel like. That the water rate that you pay should be part, you know, how much you use should be. How mu- based on how much you pay, if you if you're wanting to use tons of water, fine, but you're gonna pay through the nose for it.
So we are.
Kinda like what Alba said earlier, and if you're, if you're just using just enough to keep your dishes washed and your toilet, then we. We wanna just, I think we wanna adjust those water rates to reflect usage.
We wanna bring in a, a company to do a rate study, which is also gonna be part of uh our asset management plan. So we can determine that, and then we can build on the rates, but at this time, we needed our our drought plan to be in place, so we had to start with this. And then as far as the rest of it, rate study, all that, the tiered system, we are gonna be implementing that at a later date.
And when we operate it and we we did our rates, we can take that into consideration, so there is a tier. And when we upgraded and we we've been our rates, we can take that into consideration, so there is here of what you pay for up to nine thousand gallons.
So it's, so it starts at two thousand gallons is what you pay your base rate for and then anything after that, it it steps up from there, so four thousand.
Different than our commercial and.
Industry, and that's in the schools, yeah.
But in some ways, isn't some of those lower than other? The last time I looked at, yes, that's, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
It is very possible.
And I can, I can tell you that our water rates here can, you know, compared to the rates all around our region. Uh, they certainly can be increased and my recommendation is we need to invest as a community into our systems, so we're not in those situations.
Yes.
I think we often do that, but don't make big jumps, you know, you gotta have a good rate structure and so.
Absolutely.
Exactly. And, uh, something that we can all bear and can support.
Absolutely.
Rather than being reactive and just throwing a number out there. It's your rate, if your rate doesn't cause people stopping the water at this stage, it's, you know. Now, I'm not talking about the four thousand gallons, but I'm talking about partial bill is that you ended up having to shut your water down, then sort of quit using it. That was ridiculous. All you have to do is have a price structure in there, put it there and quit using it.
We're working on fixing that. Um, so we have some questions on the board, uh, somebody put freedom to do as I want, since I pay for it. Um, that's a terrible statement. I mean that with all respect. You all are here trying to be a part of this process and be proactive and help us. But if you wanna just do as you will, because you pay for it, you will be the reason why we run out of water and we don't wanna do that. We have a great community and we we are at a place right now where we can build off of that and make it better. So I I'm sorry, I mean that with all due respect.
I I see where you're coming from, but from on the other side of that, when we, maybe our rates aren't high enough. Okay, we can all agree to that. But when we are traveling along and everybody's doing what they're told and then slam, you know, you can't take care of your eight thousand dollar vehicle investment, your lawn maintenance. We do feel a little bit taken back, you know?
Rightfully so.
We paid for your system, yeah, you're right, we should all chip in, but we paid for our system. And I can see the frustration too in that comment.
Rightfully so.
It's a very fair, hopefully it is very fair. Not not attacking you, this problem has gone on for twenty years that I have, because I've been living in the community for about twenty years. So I can see the frustration and it's fair, maybe we didn't articulate the the, uh, comment properly, but it's a fair state, it really is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Part of the problem is communication.
Right.
It's there then, I mean, we've, we've got better communication tonight than we've had since this thing started. And in statements that we made tonight, had they have been, I'm not a Facebook person, but but obviously there's a lot of people that get their information off of Facebook. Had those feelings been put out eight months ago, the aisle would have been way less deployed back.
We're working to reverse that, right, we're definitely working to reverse that. Is our water reuse system fully operational now and doing what it is meant to do? It is, we did bring on another plant, we're fixing a tie-in Lindsay Park to it. Our softball complex is, um, up and running with the reused water. But what we need people to understand is there's only so much output and input we can do to keep our system at a stable level. Some days we have upset, so it makes it look like we're not using the system, but we are actively working on that every single day. We have a really good crew, crew in our wastewater plant.
Sarah, we took maybe everything from that, um, we use, not, it's not just those.
So we have softball, city park.
Yeah, it's soccer fields.
The soccer fields, the cemetery. I'm gonna see.
That's.
I think that's it.
That's all that's plumbed.
That's all this plumbed now, but like I said, Lindsay Park is going to be the next one we get on the system park.
Which soccer fields.
The old ones out at the, uh, T Place, out there by the, uh, the hangers, the old hangers that, uh.
Behind the softball complex.
Behind some.
By industrial park.
Yes, industrial park, thank you.
They're not used.
They're not water.
They started using Kirby Steiner when they, when they left that that park over there. So now the softball, so they're using Kirby Steiner, but that was prior to them starting to use that Lindsay Field, no. I mean, Steiner, go.
Yes.
Can our water treatment plant be converted to one hundred percent recycling like they've done in Arizona, California, et cetera? Um, I'm not quite understanding the question on.
With enough money.
Using drinking.
That is a state mandated, um, level that 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 it's at a no right now.
Well, yeah, the 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 thought about it, the the thought of it, yeah, but I mean, it's.
It has to be, it has to be on the table, guys, cuz I mean, it's gonna come a point in this community, if it's not on the table, we're, you're not gonna have water.
And think about like, in Arizona, it's it's treated better than your your bottled water, it's it's cleaner than this.
There there are lots of places that do it.
Now they're saying leave them alone, yes, but the wastewater treatment system works really good and it's it's better than what you're drinking in a water, bottled water.
I watched a documentary film on that just the other day, just happened across it when I was scanning through channels and it was, uh, trying to remember where the city was, but, um, it was in a different country, actually. But they had so many filters and systems that that water went through. It was, it was cleaner than what you get out of the ground, the time I got through with it. It's just a mental health behavior.
Well, and there's even places around Dallas that, I mean, I I was talking to Richard Harden about this yesterday. There's places there that they run it through channels for a long enough amount of time that the earth does it itself, and when it comes out the other end, it's breakable.
I'm not ready to go.
Now, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have the water supply to be able to do that kind of channeling situation, but there's ways out there to treat water and make it better.
Well, and there's a proposal, uh, I think it's five hundred million to be devoted towards, uh, brine water. Conversion also.
Desalination.
Yeah, desalination. So we probably do some funding out there for that, if if you were in a region where you could drill through the red bed into the brine water and it was usable.
Sarah, I would like to make a comment, and I appreciate everybody for being here tonight and the council and all the hard work that the city staff and everybody, the committee and everybody that has done. And I agree that this meeting tonight has been really, really good, because when we are at city council meeting, we're restricted on what we can say, what we can answer, how long you have. So this is kind of opening up the communication, and that was one thing that we definitely need to continue working on, is the communication and the open. I would like to continue, and I sent you an email and also to the mayor, I would like to continue to move forward with getting a committee together that we would call like a water advisory committee, where we have like city staff, a couple of city councilmen, people from the community, some experts to come in and to continue to look and move forward with this. Moving forward from where we are right now to coming to the spring, and yes, we need to continue applying for water, I mean, grants and and funding and so forth, because that's gonna be a continual thing. We're not gonna get it and say, okay, good, we're done, everybody, you know, be happy. No, it has to be a continual thing. And what has happened in the past has happened in the past, and we don't need to say, oh, my gosh, and point fingers, and it should never have happened, and it's happened, and this is where we are today, and all we have to do now is to move forward. So I wanna continue and working on getting this advisory committee together.
Yes.
Because you guys have done an excellent job in laying the foundation and the groundwork, and now we need to continue with this, because it's like, this is the first step, and as a community, whether it's council or city staff or community members or experts, and continue moving forward with this, and getting out of this and not letting this happen again.
Right.
We've already been to the bottom and there's no place to go but up, so I appreciate that very much. So we will continue at at moving forward with this to keep this committee going, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do have on our slide now is how you can stay informed with the city, these are all avenues that we use to push out information. Um, we just want everybody to be reminded of that option, um, we do it as short of walking door to door and knocking on door to door, we push it out as much as we can. Yes.
I just like to say kudos to the water committee, they're on their seventh draft. They've done a lot of work.
We got tenth in the back of the room.
It's changed three times in the last few days, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, and our last question is, do you like this type of presentation? Um, this is like the third time we've done one of these type of recent presentations, we like it because, um, not only you in the audience, but people that are watching that maybe can't be here at this time can get on and participate, so it's really nice to have the interaction and get some data from it. We got some yeses and maybes and, no, no. Thank you, thank you, everybody.